The developer-funded highway scheme approval, and I'll invite councillor Peter Butland to move the recommendation as circulated.
Thank you, Chair. I'm up again. Another kind of project that we've got to come included into our capital programme. Again, there is no kind of financial imperative on us, it's just an inclusion of the capital project to deliver this project. It's a developer-funded scheme looking for approval at Eastborough Way, Crowhill Road. It's all developer-funded on a Section 2 seller 278, and the completion of the highways to support development of 360 residential dwellings on land east of Eastborough Way in Nuneaton. It takes the form of a signalised junction, and Wallace, I'm sure, will kind of elaborate on what is being proposed there. As with any Section 278 agreement, a legal agreement will need to be in place before any works are tendered, and the developer has to provide a bond or cash security to at least 150% of the cost of the works. So this is just a formal thing that basically enables the developer to kind of get permission from us to operate on Her Majesty's Highway, of which we have control, and we've also put this through on the capital project. So Wallace will elaborate on what form it takes in terms of that signalised junction, but again, it's something that's been kind of put through our planning department, this is what they deem to be necessary for the provision of those houses, and I look for your support or ask any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Redford?
Please to second the motion, I reserve my right to speak, Mr Councillor.
Thank you very much. There are no amendments for this, so we can move straight to the debate. Councillor Chilvers?
Thank you. In my opinion, this paper is completely unacceptable in its current form, and to be honest, I'm surprised it got to be in front of us today. To start with, just to say, I know that this is a Section 278 agreement, and so this isn't money that we are spending, it's coming through the developer, but who, as councillor Butland said, who agrees what is built with the money that the developers have to offer? Well, it's us. It's us that decides and works with the developer, and it's us that decides what is deemed acceptable and necessary for the development. And this proposal, as it stands, is creating, spending £4.4 million to create what frankly is a hostile environment for pedestrians and cyclists. It's creating a large junction on a 40 mile an hour road without a segregated cycleway on Eastborough Way. That was originally proposed and talked about, but only £200,000 to £300,000 was going to be allocated to that, as opposed to the £4 million for the junction, and then in the end, we weren't fast enough to put together a plan that was big enough and substantial enough to do the whole cycle route. So my understanding is, that is now not going forward. And there are problems with pedestrian and walking access, and I know there will be a crossing point, but it's making it very, very difficult for pedestrians and cyclists. And our earlier speaker in the petition is saying, well, after these accidents, we need to retrofit changes to the highway system. Here we have a brand-new opportunity to improve access for pedestrian and cycling, and we're throwing it away. And so that's why I don't think that this is acceptable. I would like to see us say no to this today, and for it to go back to the drawing board to negotiate with the developer to make improvements, and get that balance between £200,000 to £300,000 for pedestrian and cycling, to this £4 million for this junction. Now, if councillor Kenner was here today, he would say that car was king in Nuneaton. Well, of course it's going to be, it's king in Nuneaton, when the alternative is risking getting run over on a 40-mile road because there isn't a cycleway. Of course, car is going to be king. And it reminded me, brought to mind some words from a famous lady, an iron lady, a lady that used to get lots of references in this chamber when Mike Perry was the councillor, but has been sadly missing in recent years. And that lady, that lady, she just didn't defend the status quo, because that's how it was, she realised that you needed to change things. And so, that's what we need to do with this project. We need to not just look at the status quo, we need to look at how we can change things. And so, I'm going to borrow some words from Margaret Thatcher. Going to borrow some words, who by the way, had very good environmental instincts, because she was a chemist, a scientist, she knew how to look at the evidence. So to borrow some words from her, to sum up my view on this paper before us now, no, no, no.
Councillor Clark?
Well, I say, yes, yes, yes. To start off with, this is in my patch, this is on my division, this is where my residents are impacted, and this is something that my residents desperately need. The road itself, and by the way, where we're talking about, the junction, is a 30 mile an hour junction, not 40. It changes just before you get to it, when you're coming from Eastborough Way. So just to clarify that, so it's a 30 mile an hour junction. The £4.4 million that's proposed to do the works for this junction is absolutely necessary, and I congratulate the authority for getting the monies to be able to upgrade it. What you have said definitely, and I agree with, is the fact that we need a pedestrian crossing within that, because the footpath on that area goes from one side of the road as you come over the bridge, and you have to change it to the other side of the road for travelling up the rest of Eastborough Way. So there is a definite need for the pedestrian crossing to be put in that area, and I would agree with that. But I do welcome the authority getting the money for this, and for helping to deliver it. What I would say is, hopefully, as you say, 360 houses being delivered, they're well on their way to being progressed at the moment, I would ask for this to be progressed as speedily as possible, without any further delays for it, and I look forward to working with the planners, developers and designers in ensuring that it delivers for my residents in that area. So yes, please, do vote for this motion.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Clark, I have to say, you didn't quite get the delivery, you know, I think, I have to say, councillor Chilvers did the better impression there, I'm afraid, so, you know, if we're scoring on marks out of 10, you didn't quite make it. However, I do agree that it's a 30 mile an hour road, and I think if we can get some agreement from the cabinet member to look at a pedestrian crossing for those funds, or even from councillor Butland maybe, to find a bit of money in his pocket for those funds that are just in crossing, I think we would be quite supportive of that stance, councillor Butland, just a thought there as you're writing your notes as what to say in response. I live along the O5 nearly, and go up the O5, spent quite a bit of time trotting up to Tamworth and back, taking my son, and I'm not going to wax lyrical about them shutting it for the HS2, because it was a nightmare, but that's not the point. But having been up there quite often, and been into Nuneaton through the long shoot and that way, there's a huge amount of house building along there. The house expansion, I know you're talking about 360 houses, but as you move up to the O5, it's clearly significantly more than that, and that area of Nuneaton does get jammed up, it really does, and, you know, even trying to get down into Nuneaton from the O5 can prove tricky down onto Eastborough Way. So I think in that respect, we have to support this, we have to try and get the traffic moving, because at the moment, it just sits, and it's not good enough, and we support it on those measures, but councillor Butland would be really grateful if he could just have a quick look in your pocket and find us that money for the upgrades for the pedestrians, but very pleased to see it's developer-funded, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shillmans?
Thank you, Chair. I'm delighted with what the previous speakers just said, clearly see that the main parties absolutely agree on this. Geoff and I cover St Nicholas, I cover Weddington, yes, you've just identified, it's more than 360, it's 4,000 and more than already, there is a huge amount of pressure on the highways in that part of Nuneaton, absolutely, I completely agree, this can't come quick enough, it is most welcome, it really is, it is going to make a significant difference there. I think in terms of the footpaths and pedestrians, actually, right now, you know, we have a lot of people that walk up and down Eastborough Way, particularly on Saturdays to see the Borough, I'd love to say, for their sake, it's thousands, but it's many hundreds, tis, it's many hundreds, and they all navigate up there perfectly fine, as do I, and there is indeed, when this was passed at the Borough, the development, the plans there, there is going to be a pedestrian crossing, not by that island, but as you go down Eastborough Way and approach the heart of England junction. So if we can get another crossing included in the traffic lights on the island, then that will be perfect, that will really cater for pedestrians' needs. In terms of the, you know, the usual stuff we get about, the cycle routes and all the rest of it, you know, there has never been that modal shift, there isn't this huge clamour for people to cycle in all sorts of places, you know, we can't uninvent the car, it may not be king, it may be flawed, but fundamentally, that's how people get around, that, buses and walking. So the whole, if we build it, it will come, they will come mentality to spending a fortune on cycle lanes that nobody ends up using, and that in various places in Europe, I've seen them getting extra European Union money to dig up the cycle lane and restore it to the highway because nobody used it, and the roads were gridlocked. We need to focus on what the need is, and the need is for improved traffic flow, as we've heard from the other speakers, and the need is to make sure that pedestrians are safe, because that's how people travel in that area, this is a great step forward, and I think the sooner we get on with it, the better. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Warwick?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with everything that's been said on our side today, Chair, and I'd just like to add, the crematorium is in that area, and I would like to hope that this scheme will continue to enable people to make their final journey with dignity and without being held up. And thank you for mentioning Margaret Thatcher, Jonathan, it's a pleasure, and I'm always reminded when I listen to some of the opposition motions of what she said. Surely there must be something the opposition are good at, and she said, yes, they're excellent at spending other people's money.
Thank you. Councillor Drew?
Thank you, thank you. Can I ask the Nuneaton and Bedworth councillors, why I've heard consistently, cycleways in the north of the county being requested, and the need for them emphasised, and almost out of envy that we are planning, eventually at least, such a trailblazing scheme like K2L in the south of the country? Yes, why the need for cycleways is consistently being raised in the north of the county if, as the previous speaker just said, they're not needed? And with all the new housing that I've just heard, we've just heard being planned in this area, surely with the climate emergency, we're aiming to encourage and support people to get off the roads, out of their cars, forget car is king for those that are able, and on to bikes and walking where possible? There seems to be a bit of a mismatch between what's been said in, for example, the Cycling Liaison Group, as mentioned just now, the K2L Group, between the need for cycleways or not in the north of the county? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Goldie?
Sorry, I couldn't let that pass. Just to clarify, we're not jealous of cycle routes, we just don't have a lot of interest. It's a fact, we don't have a lot of interest in cycling, apart from a small minority of people who hop from special interest group to special interest group to political parties who have a main focus on cycling. In Nuneaton and Bedworth specifically, speaking to Nuneaton and Bedworth, it's not something that comes up from our residents. They'd like to be able to cross the road on crossings, or go from A to B, because, as has been pointed out, modal shift is not something that's occurring rapidly, or there isn't a want for it. I mean, we knock on many, many, many doors in our areas, consistently over a long period of time, and it's never something that comes up, that people want more cycleways, or that they think that the climate emergency is a priority, it absolutely isn't, and I've said it before, time and time again, I've never, ever had anybody on the doorstep tell me that they're really worried about their carbon footprint, never! And I'm only representing this view in this chamber, because that is the view that is represented to me, from the thousands of people that I represent, from Nuneaton and Bedworth. And if I'm representing a view of K2L people, and God love you, if you want K2L, that's fine, that's up to you, but that's not anything to do with my residents, and they have no interest in that. So I don't represent that view in this chamber. Good luck to those that do, but Nuneaton and Bedworth is not. I mean, an example of that is, we have a cycle lane on Weddington Road, no one uses it, literally no one uses it. We've put cycle lanes in, and they're not used. So it's not as if we haven't tested this theory, we have, it's just not appropriate for where we live and for what our residents want, and the way that they work. So I'll leave it there, but to say that we're jealous, absolutely not.
Thank you. Councillor Humphries?
Thank you, Chair. Can I just put this back into proportion, please? I work on the cycle, and I don't jump from group to group, and I don't go on a bike, but I do represent the residents that do want to go on a bike, and I am from North Warwickshire, and I have worked in Nuneaton when I was working in the community. The roads, I agree, in Nuneaton are only wide enough to get cars up and down, and if you had a bike, you would be in danger on some of the roads going on a bike. But just coming out of Nuneaton, you have areas where children would like to go on the road to school, and that's what I fight for when I'm on the cycling group. So there is a balance, so it is that we have to fight for the residents that do want to go on bikes to school or for leisure, and that's what we're there for. We're there for every resident. Nuneaton isn't suitable, you've got lorries that go up and down the road, you're at risk, and that's why in the town, in the busy town, they don't want that area to be a cycle route. But come five miles out of Nuneaton, they do want the cycle route, and so that's why there is that little bit of, yes, we do want them further up. So we are fighting for cycle routes to get to school for leisure, and that is why we're there. We're not there just for one area, we're there for North Warwickshire. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bowden?
Thank you, Chair. It's not often in this chamber that my mouth falls open in amazement, but honest to goodness, my residents don't want it, my residents don't care about climate emergency, well, they jolly well ought to, and you ought to be telling them that they ought to, for heaven's sake! Did you not listen to what came out on the news yesterday? We've got like about six weeks to save the earth, I'm trying to think of the quote from whatever the film is. Quick, quick, we've got six weeks to save the world or something? Superman? Yes, anyway. Perhaps you could encourage your residents to cycle? You know, perhaps you could encourage people to think about the environment? Where in this whole county would cycling and active travel be the easiest? Nuneaton-Bedworth, because it's one enormous conurbation, you know? Actually, think about it, if we could get lots of people in Nuneaton and Bedworth cycling, you would reduce the congestion, you would reduce the need for all these safety measures, and actually, everybody would be healthier and probably living more cheaply. We're going to talk about the cost of living next, and the public health report, and what's the thing there, talking about cost of living having a major effect on many of our residents? And you're not encouraging people to travel actively and safely. A major issue in this county is buses. Are you encouraging your residents to go on buses? Or do they want to do that either? Do they do? Do you promote it? Do you say it's a good thing? We need to get people out of their cars, and we need to... K2L is a classic example of that, it's slow, but we're getting there, and I've heard people say, why do we need K2L? Because nobody's on their bikes. Would you want to cycle on the Cannaworth Road? Would you have a child want to settle on Cannaworth Road without a cycleway? Absolutely not. It keeps going off, I do apologise. Are you encouraging children? Provide safe cycleways for children to get to school, reduce the number of parents who need to drive, win-win all the way around. So I say, this Conservative group is not giving us any leadership, we've got a deputy leader who thinks it's all baloney and made up, we've got councillors in Nuneaton where you're all pretty much Conservative, giving no leadership at all, and I have to say, I'm extremely disappointed, very disappointed, to see that you're not championing this and trying to actually make people healthier, fitter and save money, and actually help save the planet as well.
Can you say that again? Yes.
I believe, I pointed out, that we do have cycleways in Nuneaton that are not used. I believe that I said I represent the views given to me by my residents, which may not accord with the views that you want to push from your side, but that is what I said, and that is why I'm explaining this now.
That is in point of personal...
Yeah, the point of personal explanation is that it has just been misrepresented. I stood up and said I represent the views of my residents, and I stand by that.
Thank you.
Oh dear. Difficult. Many different views, many different views. I'm a big cyclist, as you know, and, you know, we may have moans and groans. I'm keen to promote cycling, I'm not keen to tell people they must cycle. I think we should be leaders, you know, I think we should be encouraging people to give it a try, to give it a thought. I'm also very, very conscious of the fact that we are representatives, and we have to represent the people who voted us in. So I understand that argument, and if it's been tried and it hasn't worked, you know, there's something going on, it could be that what's been tried just doesn't fit in to an overall network. I mean, it's where we are. We haven't had a modal shift, because, you know, it's still not very pleasant to cycle on the roads. This council, I believe, is supposed to be aiming towards a modal shift, trying to get people on public transport and cycling active travel. I'm part of this Cycling Liaison Group, I'm very keen to push that as much as possible. Residents I represent, not all of them, you know, car is king at the moment, but a lot of residents I represent do like the idea of cycle routes, do want to go down that direction. I'm not going to cycle from where I live to Ulster along a main road, but if there was a decent cycle path, either off-road or on the road, I would certainly consider it. Maybe not in the rain, maybe in the rain, once I get used to it, okay? This council, I think, should be leading, this council should be pushing the idea of cycling. Well, I've said that, there we go. Kind of run out of steam. However, I will not go against the local reps in this case, you know, these are the local representatives in their area, if they want this to go ahead, then that's good. But in general, I just wanted to point out that not all Conservatives are totally against cycling. Not many Conservatives are totally against cycling, plenty of Conservatives are in favour of it, and I know that, you know, we are a broad church, you guys are a broad church. And I'm going to get, before I get into trouble, I'm going to sit down.
Thank you very much. Councillor Fragley?
I'm really saddened to hear that cycling is becoming a political fight. This government is actually putting out guidance for active travel, and it's beginning to actually instruct people to look at the way in which they're constructing their railways, their roads, their pathways, their shared space, their cycle spaces. We're being instructed from a Conservative government to look at this, but I don't want cycling to become a political football. This council has a responsibility to honour its climate change commitment and look at ways to reduce the use of the car. Even when we go over to electric cars, or perhaps hydrogen cars, there will still be fairly major pollution attached to that, because of the wheels and all the other things attached to manufacturing. In my patch, I must say that cycling is having a slight nudge, not a major nudge, but a slight nudge to more and more people using it. I'm getting questions often from parents about why we're not enabling their children to cycle to school. The government's moving for it, this council has taken a motion to approve, moving towards more consideration for climate change. I heard yesterday that we are being asked to reduce our net zero target from 2050 to 2040, as time is actually running out. I'm sorry, everybody, we have all got to look at our own ways of doing things, and where we can, we have to make that modal shift ourselves, and we need our highways authority to enable that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to reflect on the comments that no one in Nuneaton really wants to cycle. Well, my residents certainly talk to me on the doorstep, and they push for cycling, and so... So I think, yeah, so I'm not going to support this, because we need to be prioritising cycleways wherever we are, and I'd just like to remind councillor Goldie that when I put forward a climate motion to strengthen our climate plans, you came up and said the same thing to me, this is not what your residents want, and you invited me to come to your area, and you would show me, take me around and show that your residents didn't want that. I accepted that, you still haven't taken me around your ward, but if you did, and I saw for myself that that's what your residents didn't want, I would be more sympathetic to what you're saying. So please, I'd love to come around and listen to what your residents actually do say about the roads and networks around Nuneaton and Bedworth. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Timms?
Hello. Cycle routes in Warwickshire are really important to us. We have the K2L, we have the A47 at Longshoot, we have one coming through in Ulster, Stratford, and some in Warwick as well. So I don't know what this argument is about, this council is absolutely committed to active travel in all its forms. We're also really, really committed to delivering things like the cycle buddies, and that is delivered across Warwickshire, the whole of Warwickshire, and that includes Nuneaton and Bedworth. If anybody doesn't know what cycle buddies are, it's about encouraging residents, who may be a little bit scared about particular bits of the route, but somebody who's an experienced rider will help another one. So it's that grassroots change that we are very much about, and we're very much about active travel to schools, so it's the next generation. I'm not likely to get on a bike at my age, I did do when I was a child, so that is where I think we need to focus our efforts, and we are doing so, and I'm sure since councillor Crump has raised his hand to speak, he will speak some more about that. This particular scheme needs to go ahead, and needs to go ahead quickly, and we should all be voting for it, and not having this side argument, because this council is totally, totally committed to all forms of active travel.
Thank you. I'm glad you mentioned the scheme, I thought we were getting a bit away from what it was about to start with. Thank you very much. So councillor Pemberton?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I've been beaten to the punch because I was going to observe...
I forgot to press my button. I was beaten to the punch because I was going to observe that for the last 20 minutes, the last seven or eight interventions, certainly at district level, would have been ruled out of order because I don't actually talk to the agenda item. The exam question is about this particular scheme, and...
The exam question is about this particular scheme and we have spent 20 minutes or so in a fairly all-over-the-place argument and discussion about the wider implications. At a purely technical level, you've got a scheme that's been through both a local planning authority and the highway authority and has been put together in accordance with the policies of both organisations. And you've already heard that there are opportunities for that scheme to be refined and the question of a pedestrian crossing. So it's just a plea, can we get back to the exam question, please? I'm quite happy to have the debate around active travel and that may well be something we want to revisit, but can we just actually spend our time dealing with what we've got to deal with and rather than just enjoying the sound of our own voices?
Thank you. Well, there's nobody else indicated they want to speak. Oh, councillor Crump, time for the joke.
I could say I'll do this in a roundabout way, but... Sorry, Mr Chairman, you did... Yeah, I think really we need to take our residents with us. You know, I'm not in favour of imposing anything on things and having had three children, trying to impose something on children is quite challenging and difficult. So really, we need to take them with us. There's many people we've not spoken about today. I have a disabled son, he wouldn't have been able to ride a bike. We've got many people with disabilities. With my dodgy hip, I wouldn't be able to go on a bike now or if I did, I'd fall off. So that'll be another road safety incident that I'm trying to reduce. So I think we do need to encourage safe and active travel. We need to have, make sure we've got safer routes to school. And some of these schemes, we're bringing them in, but let's look at them, let's look at the evidence, let's spend the money at the highest need and then work down our list, let's make the most difference, get our priorities right and make sure we take people with us. We all know about parking around schools, we've gone off the subject a bit, so why not go off a bit further? Parking around schools, we have parents who park around schools in such a way that is really dangerous, yet complain about speeding, they complain about dangerous roads. So really, we need to persuade our people to work together, let's find something that's suitable, but let's spend our money wisely and where it makes the most difference in terms of impact on residents' lives and impact on road safety. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Slipped off the subject a bit there again. So, right, at this stage, come...
Catchy.
Sorry.
I said it's catchy, chairman.
All right, so I'll call on councillor Redford to respond now.
Thank you, Chairman. Getting back to the agenda, which is about a Section 278 developer funding scheme. The priority for this particular issue are two things. One is getting through, passing this developer-funded scheme, and B, is this what the local community are supporting? And the answer is yes. And why do they want this? Well, they want it because they have a traffic problem. There is heavy traffic holding up this particular section. So through the developer funding, we're looking at providing the signalling of the junction. We shall need to be, we shall be improving the signage on the actual carriageway and of course on the approach roads. It is important that we don't actually miss the point here. It's about a priority. It's about the fact we've got the money to go ahead and improve the circumstances of the Nunneton and Bedworth residents. I know there are many other points, but there are issues which are outside of this particular agenda item. And yes, we can look, we've still got to go through discussions, the technical arrangements, et cetera, development with the development and design and development. And yes, pedestrian crossing is certainly something that will come up and be looked at. But the important thing, Chairman, funding. This scheme is fully funded and it is needed and I ask support for this scheme from the council. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Butlin.
Thank you, Chair. Jonathan, two names come up, I absolutely agree with you. I'm a Margaret Thatcher fan, have been all my life, I lived through it and she was a great changer of the society we live in today and her legacy will long be with us. I'm a monetarist and I also apply those monetarist principles to this authority and that's why we've got money. Secondly, Mike Perry, great. I do miss Mike Perry, I just love that passion that he'd come from when he sat over there and every budget day, Mike Perry launched into the opposition and it was great to watch and we all said, oh, yes. So on those two points, Jonathan, great, I agree with you. And then it all went to pot. It deviated from what was before us. The rest of the debate was for another place. It was for the planning authority because this has been voted through on a planning authority according to their planning rules and also there have been debates about cycle routes and pedestrians. Coming back to Sarah, I agree with you, if we can find a way basically on that junction and within lighting structures and lighted junctions, I'm sure we can make it safe for pedestrians on that lighting junction with the existing technology and also possibly within that existing budget. The aspect of it also that I've got to point out to you is, developers, when they make these proposals and what they will accept to fund, all they have to do is to seek to not make it worse. In this case, they are making it better because most people have accepted that this junction will improve that congestion that we've got in that place already. So in actual fact, what we're getting out of the developers in terms of what's being proposed is better than what was there before and there is no obligation for developers to actually do that. All their obligation is not to make it worse. So in terms of basically the debate we've had too, I mean, it's a general debate about everything and anything and climate change and cycle routes, but they're for another place. And of course, it's given an airing to the Green Party over there and their policies, but the point is, we have a Section 278 contribution that we have to implement. The voting in terms of the principles and everything and the design, whatever, we were consultants to. The approval of that scheme was done at district level. And for us to basically kind of oppose this, we are stepping on the toes of the local planning authority and that is not within our powers and should not be within our powers. We are not unitary yet. So I put before you the motion as it stands, this is an improvement to that junction, we have got to put it into this Section 278 agreement and I brought it hopefully back to what was in the motion before us and I seek your support for this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no amendments, so we move straight to the vote. All those in favour of the motion? All those against? That's the motions carried. Sorry? Any abstentions? That motion's carried, thank you very much.